This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, well, thank you, councilors, for joining us tonight and Melanie for joining us. I'm filling in. I'm Deputy Mayor John Perroff. I'm filling in for Cheryl Ford tonight. So if I could call the meeting to order. Moved by, can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Belinda. Second by, we lost Peter, I guess. Can anybody get a hold of Peter? Can anybody hear me or is it my screen that's frozen?
I can hear you, John.
Okay, thanks.
I said he's lost his internet, so I'm just asking if he wants to call in instead.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I've had a little bit of a challenge getting my computer connected. Sorry about the delay.
No problem. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay. We're just waiting for one of our councilors to get back online.
Very good. How are things in Horn Payne today? How's the weather and whatnot?
Very good.
It's good, yeah.
Raining, cold, but I mean, it's Horn Payne. It's always good in Horn Payne.
I'm not far from Barry, Ontario, and we've got, I think, our third or fourth tornado watch today. So, interesting. Ever since, I moved literally 40 minutes north of, you know, Richmond Hill where I was before, and it's like a whole different ecosystem all of a sudden. Find myself in tornado alley. Thanks for exciting afternoons.
Did Peter get back to you, Gail?
No. He's probably trying to sign back on.
Do we even have Korm tonight?
You do with Pete on.
Hello, Pete. You're back.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, we want to open a meeting, but I need a mover and a seconder. It was moved by Belinda. It'd be seconded by Peter. The resolve that we do call this special meeting a council to order on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, 6:05 PM. All in favor? Pete, you're frozen again.
We actually set that up, John. We set that up to emphasize the message of, you know, our message tonight.
I'm thinking that way too, you know.
An interesting position to be frozen in, huh? I've got him. I don't know if it's the same for you, but I've got him with the glass up against his mouth.
Yeah, so do I. It's a long drink.
He's going to call in.
Okay.
Are you there, Peter?
Yes, I am, John.
Excellent. There in favor of moving, of opening the special meeting tonight?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Any change, review and note any changes to tonight's agenda? None being. The resolve that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. I need a mover and a seconder.
I'll move it.
Peter and Belinda? All in favor?
John, can you repeat that? That was all broken up for me.
Oh, yes, certainly. Moved by Peter, seconded by Belinda. Be resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. And that was all in favor?
Thanks.
I am.
Okay, carried. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof, or declaration of conflict of interest. If you have any now, let us know anytime throughout the meeting tonight. Please let us know. Okay, so tonight we have a special presentation by Community Network Partners, and that's led by John DeLisandro.
Perfect.
And Melanie Pilon. So, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the council's time this evening to have this discussion. Should I share the presentation, or is it better that everyone follow along? I'm not sure what you're used to doing. I don't want to necessarily take up the bandwidth that may be required, but should I try?
I think so.
Okay.
I think you should try for the public's benefit, so let me just.
So I'm hitting share screen, but for some reason, nothing's happening.
Gail has to grant you access first.
Oh, yes, of course, of course. We used to use GoToMeeting, but it's been some time. I'm out of practice with GoToMeeting. Okay. Okay, can everyone see that?
Not yet, but it will be coming, I think.
It'll come up soon, eh? Maybe just. Let me know when you can see. Okay, all right, excellent. Okay, well, I'm. From what I understand, the council is certainly familiar with who Canadian, sorry, Community Network Partners is. I'm trying to change the page here. Just trying to get my navigation working. So I won't, I won't spend a lot of time on who CNP is. For the most part, it's Melanie and myself. We are two, you know, very, as you probably know, and anyone who's attended the NSRBN council meetings when they were happening, will, I hope, know and understand that we're both very, very passionate about the cause. This is, let me just stress this, maybe just as context. You know, this is not a get-rich-quick scheme by the company that owns CNP and our consortium of companies. This is a, very much a social-focused project for us. We believe that there, because we have the expertise and the experience, and now also the funding capability, we believe strongly in the mission of going to serve and help these smaller communities that continue to be passed by, that continue to be underserved. And so, unless there are any specific questions around who we are and what we're doing in the world, you know, I just wanted to emphasize that, that fact is that we are having these discussions in earnest around what we believe we can bring. Horn Payne has long been among the communities that we've recognized as a perfect candidate for what we have to offer. And now we can see through the qualification of Icon that the Ontario government agrees. And we hope that, to some degree, you as well do, and that we can answer any questions that you might have today and get into some level of detail anyway, in terms of what it is that we're proposing to offer here. I could elaborate on our vision and our mission, but essentially, we want to, our primary objective is to collaborate with community leaders such as yourselves and advocate for the co-ownership of a network. We believe that the three P model, and certainly the joint ownership model, is a very important one, that the leaders of the community have a voice in terms of what that network looks like over time. And as the needs of the community and the businesses within the community ebb and flow and grow, and hopefully continue to grow exponentially. We also believe, and I'm sure that council recognizes the importance of internet now, not only in terms of enriching the lives of its citizens, but also in inviting economic development and things like data centers, contact centers, and things of that nature, which are enabled by, and only enabled by best-in-class connectivity to the internet. So anyway, let me move on. Melanie and myself, I know you're, you know Melanie very well. You probably know me just sporadically, certainly from reference to this topic, and also in the brief appearances that I had with the NSRBN. But I grew up in GE Capital in the technology side, where I spent about a decade, and then 15 years after that with Telus. It started off as a tiny little company called ClearNet out of Pickering, Ontario, and then was acquired by Telus. And so I ran their systems and technology shop for nine of those 15 years as a VP there. And then I decided to join a smaller business. So I spent a lot of time in the corporate world and really had an affinity now for working in smaller, smaller businesses that were, you know, that had, let's just say, more noble missions than simply growing shareholder value. What attracted me to the company called YRI, from which I came in this entity and still continue to manage, was the fact that we were focused exclusively on underserved. The one, the actual, the thing that tipped me over was during the interview process, the CEO talked about how we had not only connected the community of Rainy River, but also donated laptops to the school there. And I thought, that's, that's the business I want to be in. So, as dramatic as it may seem, I'm, you know, very, very passionate about what we're doing and how we're doing it. And I'm thrilled that now Crown Capital Partners has come to the table and bringing us together, forming this telecommunications focus and providing the financial backing to the degree that we can exploit it for mutual gain of our company and the communities that we're partnering with. So, our key objectives, as I mentioned, are, you know, primarily to partner with companies in terms of, sorry, communities in terms of co-ownership, but not necessarily so. One of the things that we want to emphasize as we begin our discussions with communities and as we continue in looking at the legal and business structures, is, you know, we want to emphasize that we're completely flexible. We're not one-size-fits-all. We're not about, you know, forcing our customers to comply with our business model. We are very, very flexible. Our primary objective is making it work, finding out what the gap is between where you are and where we need to be or want to be, and being flexible in terms of our relationship and the structures that we put in place. That can be all the way from zero, and all we want is some, potentially some advocacy from the community leaders to help us with things like municipal consents, to help advocate the value of what we're bringing, all the way up to a shared ownership and a voice at the table, the formation of a board, whatever the case may be, so that there's proper governance and focus in terms of the ongoing stewardship of the network and the benefit that it brings to the community. Of course, we want to build something that's future-proof. We want to employ the right technology. Another thing that we bring is being agnostic to technology, meaning we're not married to a specific vendor or platform. We don't have to do, like many of the larger, you know, without being too, you know, disparaging of them, obviously, they exploit their purchasing power to their, to their benefit. And so they strike, you know, favorite nation's pricings with very large companies like Nokia and Cisco and companies like that. And so they're married to that technology. And if that technology cost and caliber doesn't fit, well, then, too bad, right? And that's exactly the opposite direction that we go in. We pick the right technology for the right application. You know, it's all about customer experience. Can we establish a better customer experience, a world-class experience? And then will that technology scale into the future as the community grows, not only in size, but also in its needs and desire for feature-rich applications and video conferencing and, you know, things of that nature that we all saw come to the forefront in the last 18 months to a couple of years now. So we think that is a significant advantage. Finding the right size, the right fit for the need is, I think, a very, very important distinction where we are set apart, I think, from just about every competitor, including the tier-two and the boutique players, who again, tend to be married to a specific platform, let alone manufacturer of that technology. So those are, you know, the key points. And then, of course, we're bringing, you know, we're bringing decades of experience in each of these technologies, wireless and wired, where we have continued to build robust carrier-grade networks at the enterprise level in the most rugged and remote parts of the country, as well as South America and a couple of other smaller countries, or I should say, smaller communities south of the border, coast-to-coast. And we're talking about very, very remote, the northern, most northern parts of BC and Ontario, Saskatchewan, Newfoundland, et cetera. So we know what it takes to build in these areas, and not to suggest that, sorry, Horn Payne and Duberville and these communities that we're talking to are anywhere near that. But, you know, there is and are challenges that come with being in those parts of the world with respect to transport and the cost of mobilization and support and things of that nature. But we have a long record, track record of experience building specifically in these parts of the country. So, talking specifically about the opportunity, I'm sure that you're familiar with it. I'm sure that you've had a look through the information that Melanie has provided. The bottom line here is that, you know, we have a potential grant from Icon of about $300,000 that we can put towards what we're right now estimating to be about a $1.3 million project. And if we can find a, you know, a way forward in terms of working together to secure supplemental funding from some of the more recently announced grants such as Ontario Connects, $4 billion in there, you know, that the government is inviting players like us and yourselves to come to the trough, to help serve ourselves. So we think that we've got, you know, a very good story to tell in Horn Payne. And we believe that we can, you know, find the funding between where we are now and the gap that is in front of us in terms of making this project a reality. Recognizing full well that the council has many priorities, and, you know, I honestly don't know where improved internet is in your priority of things in terms of your objectives and imperatives. But I hope that the council recognizes, you know, just the potential that this sort of thing could bring in your objectives to, you know, to drive growth within the community. So that's really what we're talking about here, is understanding your desire, understanding any reticence that you have and what those are, if we can help you overcome that inertia, if I can call it that. And really just taking a look at whether or not it's prudent to recognize the money that is on the table now, rather than potentially walking away from it and then precluding ourselves or precluding Horn Payne from, you know, any, we'll call it near-future opportunities as well. We give this up, it's probably not going to put us in good position, you know, in the next cycles, if you will, in terms of, you know, why now? Although, although that's not the reason we're doing this. You know, we do want to exploit and, you know, examine this to the extent that you're willing to examine it with us and understand whether or not we should move forward. And if not, you know, this is by no means, and I think I said this to Gail when we met face-to-face as well, this is not a, you know, a pressure sales tactic by us at all. It's just simply something that looks like it's a very good opportunity that we should at least run to ground and see whether or not we can make it work and whether it fits within your, you know, purview of priorities. So I'm going to pause there. I've been a bit of a fire hose spraying all this information out, but talking maybe a little too much. Are there any questions so far? Any concerns or points of discussion that you want to throw on the table, or should I keep marching forward? Hopefully, hopefully I wasn't talking to myself that whole time. Did that, did that come through okay? Was that, was that clear? Okay, okay.
I mean, I see some smiles on the faces of John and Belinda, for sure I see.
Okay, good. I can't, I can't see you, so I hadn't been monitoring expression. That's the one, the one thing that video conferencing leaves to be desired, is that, you know, that reading your audience, you know. Okay, so any questions then?
Before you go, John? Yeah, how long has Community Network Partners been a company?
It was incorporated in late 2019, early 2020, somewhere in there. I don't know exactly, to be honest. I was pulled in in October of last year, when it was perceived that, you know, the NSRBN was ready to go, ready to rock it. And I was pulled in to say, you know, let's get this, let's get this project delivered. And then unfortunately, shortly thereafter, there was, you know, some concern by the representatives of the communities. When, you know, the rubber was about to hit the road, there seemed to be some sort of, you know, reticence to kind of see it through. So what we did do there, and was that John speaking?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, John. You know, what we did do is we said, well, you know, who is still interested and how do we move forward? And as you may know, Mayor Bev of Duberville, who was certainly a champion of the NSRBN, we have struck a deal with Duberville. We have kicked off there, as I'm sure you're aware. And Pick-Mobert First Nation, although there's been some setback with respect to the funding that was announced, because they have to understand what they may be foregoing in terms of other funds and other, you know, monies that they have available to them. So that's kind of thrown a little bit of a schedule wrinkle. But from what I understand, the last version is very well-received. And we're actually hoping this week, we've got a solid green light and we can begin our construction there as well. So two of the nine communities we were able to move forward with. And CNP then, we'll call it, you know, we're still relatively young, certainly. But we do bring to bear the expertise, the technical and business expertise of Crown Capital, of Galaxy Communications, of YRI and ourselves.
So if I can just reiterate, John, Community Network Partners is the newest company of the Crown Capital Telecom, in the Crown Capital Telecom portfolio, of which there is many companies, Galaxy Broadband, YRI. They've also just recently acquired a company called CFAC, which is Canadian Fiber Optics Corporation. So they, we are continually building the telecom portfolio.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, please interrupt me at any point here, of course. So I think most of you also are aware that we did transfer the signing authority for the Icon funding from what was SEDEC to ourselves, so Community Network Partners, specifically myself. I'm now the signatory for the Ministry of Infrastructure's granting of that Icon fund. And so what they're expecting from us now, aside from the two communities, Duberville and Pick-Mobert, that we're moving forward with, to advise them who else we're going to be working with. And if not, then they'll gladly take that money back and give it to someone else. So that's, again, what we're hoping, at least, is to, you know, get some indication from you that there's a willingness to at least explore this so that we can, you know, let the ministry know that they should hold on to the money for Horn Payne, because we're, you know, we're exploring, we're, you know, we're in planning. And that they should hold that allocation for us until such a time that, you know, we're either ready to go or can confirm that we're not. Melanie has intimate knowledge of the other potential funds that we could exploit. And certainly, the new one, Ontario Connects, was just recently announced. And that's a very important one, with a significant amount of money in there and close to 100 different districts, if I can call them that, I suppose, across the province that are providers are being invited to vie for. But certainly, the NOHFC is another that we believe we can go to, with the Icon being focused primarily on the last mile, if I can call it. That's the access layer, the connectivity to the homes and the dwellings and the places of business. Whereas Ontario Connects includes things like backhaul and those other, you know, transport and behind-the-scenes kind of infrastructure that is also very important and necessary when we're, when we're building networks like this. So we believe that we can go after them. We believe that we're in good shape for them. And I think that our qualification under Icon only underscores that, you know, that potential that we have in terms of making a case with supplemental funds or funding, I should say. So Melanie, you've kind of structured this, and maybe so that I'm not the only one doing any talking. Do you want to maybe just take and articulate some of the, you know, specific actions that we're hoping to table today?
Absolutely. I'll just make a quick comment back about the potential funders. So I'll just, I'll just mention that the, I worded it, potential funding includes, we really need to qualify the opportunity for each of the funds. The Ontario Connects program is still very early, was actually just released, you know, last week. We're still really digging down to see, you know, what are eligible costs and which, you know, which communities will qualify for funds under that program. And the Northern Ontario Heritage Funds, they do have a broadband program. So we really have to see if we can kind of double-dip, because the Icon program is a provincial program as well. But to my knowledge, and I'm sure many others around the table, Gail and Stacy, we have, you know, the NOHFC has been very, very willing to partner with communities to get these projects done. But the point I really want to drive home here is that now is the time to really plan your broadband projects, because money is, is kind of growing on trees, if you, if you'll allow me the expression, to get these projects done. So that's, that was my quick comment on the, on the funding sources. For action items, we're looking for councils to commit by way of council resolution, the desire to partner with Community Network Partners to just qualify the opportunity to really, like John said, really dig down to see where we can, where we can best, you know, find additional opportunities and to really. you know, find additional opportunities and to really, really support this project that works best for the town of Horn Pain and so we can get this, get this project done that is considered, you know, viable for all parties. We're looking to partner with the township on a local level, not on a regional level. So, you know, where we would, you know, partner hand in hand to, to get these funding applications in. So to dedicate municipal resources. You know, do whatever it takes to, to get these funding applications in. Funding applications are generally fairly simple, but we would, it's not something we can do by ourselves. We would need the support of, of the township staff and, and those who are knowledgeable in economic development and grant writing if we're going to go after these funds together.
Great. See if I can flip the page here. So maybe just a little bit more in terms of, you know, the value proposition here and, and what we're, how, what we're proposing differs from your traditional players in the market. We've, you know, we've got the big guys, the Bell and the Rogerses. The more, we'll call them tier two, the more sort of regional players like T-Betel and ExplorNet, both of whom we know are, you know, have some level of service availability within your communities. And then the local boutique players as well, who often lease infrastructure and provide services directly to consumers. And I don't want to drain this slide, but, you know, we, we think that we've got important distinctions in terms of not only, you know, a comprehensive, you know, end, end feel to this, but also in terms of flexibility, also in terms of completeness of thought. At the end of the day, it really just represents a very flexible model for, for the community. Again, whether that's at the table with us, steering the train, the boat. I guess you don't steer a train. Or, or whether that's, you know, playing more of just a supporting role off to the side and inviting and, and supporting and whatever, whatever means is, is reasonable or palatable even to, to the council. That's really the punchline of this big slide here. It's always been a, a point of pride for us in, in the enterprise world. And we're taking this now into the consumer broadband space as well. So that's essentially it. I know there's probably lots of questions around, you know, some of the more specifics and whatnot. But, but that's, that's essentially our narrative here today. We think we have something to, to offer. We think that Horn Pain has a, we'll call it a rare opportunity. As much as I agree with Melanie, you know, they're of a feeding frenzy right now with all the money out there. But, you know, it's not going to last long. And, and I think, you know, people who move quickly and, you know, to take advantage of those are going to be the winners. And those that hesitate, I think, and I fear potentially may find themselves having to wait or, you know, be their back behind, in the back of the line. And by no means is that, you know, some provocation. I'm not trying to provoke you into, you know, I, I think you well know what the opportunity is. But we just think we've got something good here. We've got an opportunity to seize it and we'd really like to talk to you about your level of interest in moving forward on it. So that's, that's all we had in terms of presentation. Gladly answer any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Do either council have a question? Peter?
I'm good. Thanks.
Belinda, do you have any questions? Go ahead. Oh, you're good? Okay. Thank you, John. But I guess one of the things that I'm thinking of is, it's always a top concern of all of ours is especially going through budget season. The cost of the pro, the cost and the length that you, like, can you talk to us a little bit about the structure? How that's going to play out?
Yes. So, you know, we've yet to do any, any level of real detailed design. But, you know, again, our approach is to be as, you know, let me say this. It's a price performance play, right? The maximum amount of performance for the lowest price in terms of quality and the customer experience. So the idea here is we would refine our estimate with respect to design and technology. We would understand specifically what the gap is between the capital cost to build it and the operational cost in terms of potential revenue from end, end consumers and potentially what we would require from the council itself in terms of some supplemental commitment just to, to float the economics. Now, in the, in the letter of intent that Melanie had sent earlier, you know, there were some figures in there that, for lack of anything else, were a starting point based on our very, very high level look at things. But in terms of, you know, the specific answer to that, it depends. You know, we would have to take a closer look on, on the detail. But essentially what it looks like is there's a cost to build it and we could go after additional funding. We could potentially provide a bridge financing and recoup that through the economics of the model in operation. And there's an operational, ongoing operational cost where we need to pay third parties and, and personnel to support the, to support the network. We have to provide, we have to supply things like data centers that we rent space from. We have to supply transport from the likes of Bell and people who own infrastructure that crosses the country, internet gateway services, et cetera. So all of that has a cost, you know, a contact center, a network operations center, truck rolls when, when things break and things of that nature. And we would look at, and again, we have sort of this beginning model, and I believe that Melanie shared it in, in the format where we could, you know, flick and, and turn dials and flick levers to see what, you know, what it might look like if this goes up and that goes down. Really what we're hoping to do is get around the table with that model and say, you know, if, if the community could, you know, for its own purposes, for the community buildings and the services that you use, data services that you use, you know, what is the, what is the acceptable level of commitment for those services to have? You know, and I was in, I was in the, the building there and I think, you know, I did a quick little sort of speed test, and I know that you've got adequate services, but we're not, that's not what we're talking about, right? We're not talking about adequacy here. We're not talking about surviving. We're talking about, you know, what would it take to bring a world-class network experience to the township of Horn Pain to enable that stuff, right? And we would take a look at that and say, well, what, what's palatable for those municipal buildings or those facilities to have that service there? You know, there's a figure right now that, that may have a sticker shock effect on you. I, I'm not sure. I'd certainly welcome any feedback. That was just the starting point, but the idea is we would refine the estimate, understand what potential would be based on a realistic take rate, uptake rate of subscribers from residents and businesses. And then based on that revenue flow, what the gap is and how we would close it. Does that make sense, at least just from a, you know, a high level?
Sort of, yeah.
I, I don't have the numbers, John. I mean, it's not, I'm not coming you today, coming to you today with a baked proposal saying, you know, here, sign this document. Really it is, we're asking for whether or not there's an appetite to engage in that, that exercise to flesh out the detail.
Yeah, I realized that and I didn't really expect that. But so if, if, if we move forward and partner with you guys, you guys would work together to build the infrastructure, put the lines up, build the, the units that we need. Right? The data, there is not the data center, but the control center, whatever it is. After that, what support do we get by, with, from you guys?
Well, ongoing support. So, so break, fix, you know, repair, work, service, services, for example, when things break, we would be monitoring the services on a 24/7, 365 basis, not only reactively but proactively. So as conditions arise that lead to a disruption or a degradation of services, we have an operations center, both automated and people-driven, that are monitoring things and watching for trouble, making sure that the, you know, the, the data is flowing and that the, the uptime and the performance of the network is always kept to best in class. There are services that need to be, continue to be managed in between Horn Pain and the, we'll call it the rest of the world. There's a connection essentially that's going to go from a local point of presence within Horn Pain to a internet exchange. That's where all of the service providers would meet. One example is 151 Front Street in Toronto. That is a carrier hotel, if I can call it that, where everyone, including US and international players, has a presence. That's where we, YRI currently and Galaxy, that's where we interchange with Telus and Bell and Zayo and Allstream, et cetera. So there are costs in terms of, excuse me, managing and maintaining that connectivity and et cetera. So we would basically manage it end to end. The customer experience being the, essentially what we're guarding. We're making sure that the customer experience is such that it is, you know, always available or as available as, as much as possible and that the performance is unimpeded. And that includes, you know, third parties and other related infrastructure that need to be managed and maintained.
Okay, thank you. Because, yeah, like one of the biggest factors are the month, you, you need a, a certify a big tenant, right?
We need, I mean, anchor tenants definitely are important. And, and, you know, we recognize that there are some, some businesses that we could turn to as well in that regard, right? So to the degree that we can, and have the, the council's influence over those, those businesses in terms of the value, again, of, of this network, that's certainly going to help the economics along, absolutely. If not entirely and beyond, so, yeah.
Okay. Is, here's another question. We have, one of our biggest industries in this town resides just basically outside of town. They're quite a ways away. In your Community Network Partners, do you guys have some kind of infrastructure to bring them faster and more reliable internet than they currently, currently have?
We have points of presence across the country, as I said, John. So depending on where you're talking about, we can certainly, we, we're in the business of solving for X, right? So the big guys, Bell, Telus, et cetera, they, they come to us when they've got a customer. I'll give you an example, Royal Bank. They've got Royal Banks all over metropolitan, you know, Canada, but they also have Royal Bank in, in, you know, small communities, Northern Saskatchewan, you know, Fort McMurray and, and places that are not, you know, easy to get to. So even Telus and Bell have a, have a challenge getting to them. And that's what we're in the business of doing. So we'll take a call from them and they'll say, hey, can you do the Canadian Border Services Agency in Cartwright, you know, Manitoba or Estevan, Saskatchewan? And there's nothing there and we'll figure out how to join the dots, how to connect the dots. So the answer is yes, we can do that. We do have points of presence right across this country and in every single province. The question is, how difficult is it to get there and i.e. how costly is it to get there? Everything is possible, but in some cases it may or may not be economically feasible. And that's why we have such an underserved population in this country. But I'm sure you understand that. I don't, I don't mean to, you know, preach here, but the short answer is yes, we can serve because we do have, we have a web of, of presence. But I don't want to be presumptuous to say, oh yeah, no problem. You know, there's going to be some challenge potentially. You have to go around a mountain. You have to get around clutter such as trees and elevation. And that all just talks to cost, so. But that's what we do. We've been doing that for the last decade at YRI and that's, that's our specialty.
And John, how many kilometers is Horn Pain is the mill outside of Horn Pain?
I believe it's about 12.
Yeah, so. And the Horn Pain Forest as well as White River Forest Products, they did submit letters of support to the NSRBN. I know that they're very interested in being connected.
Yep. To kind of follow up on the, on the same kind of line of questions, is having the ability to go wireless an option?
Absolutely. Absolutely, John. Yeah, I'm glad, I'm actually glad to hear the question because in today's world, all people want to hear, it seems, is wire, you know, fiber, fiber, fiber. And the truth is, I'll tell you, I'm supporting some of the most crucial federal government locations today using microwave and wireless technology. And it is, you know, best in class, 100% availability. You know, things like, I do a lot of the Canadian, the CBSAs across the border. And you can imagine what that was like during the pandemic, right? When, at the onset of the pandemic, when there was so much uncertainty, those services were very, very, very important. And so in the most remote rural parts of the world, we've got less than four hour resolution time. So when, when there is an issue, we can snuff those out in, in four hours or less. As a matter of fact, our overall average is sitting around just a little over three hours in terms of outage per year. So that's, you know, that's certainly in the realm of best in class for sure. And so yes, wireless is a very, very viable platform to serve. And if something is 12 kilometers away, for example, like a mine or a, or, you know, a business, we can serve that very easily. We don't have to trench fiber through rocky terrain and spend all kinds of, of money doing that. We can shoot a wireless point-to-point signal between two points and, and give them an absolutely transparent ethernet experience, as we call it. So absolutely.
Good. Well, that, that's really good to hear.
Yeah.
So early on in your presentation, if I can ask another question?
Of course.
You spoke about a lot of collaboration with the communities. Being on council, obviously one of my concerns is employment for local residents of some sort. Is there not, would there be an opportunity to be trained and act as a service provider, the service person here in Horn Pain?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, it's, it's part of our DNA. That's, I mean, that's part of our advocacy is not only do we want to build networks, we want to employ local trades, individuals, residents of, of the, of the communities where we're building, whether that's in construction, whether that's in sales, whether that's in support or beyond. Absolutely. And we're proud of that, as a matter of fact. So we, we advocate for that and we, we strive for it. Melanie will tell you that, the, the two people who are, 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 our sales team in Duberville, of course, are not, not only a council member, but certainly residents of the community and, and did an amazing job on our, on our kickoff there, on our inaugural sales rally a couple of weeks ago. So the answer is yes, a wholehearted yes.
We also engaged a local, a local firm to do our installations of all of our equipment and do our service as well as our construction. So laying all of our fiber is done by a local firm in Duberville.
Okay. So when you say local, you mean like in the community itself, not in the neighboring community or?
Yeah. Well, so there, it's N1 solution. So they're actually based of Sault Ste. Marie, but they do have a commercial presence in Duberville. So they do have an office that was originally established with their dealings with the mines. But they were able to, to take on this additional work. So they're building their, their presence in Duberville as a result of their partnership with us. And they hire local, local residents from Duberville. So we're really excited.
If we go with you guys, so we can count on a local person here in Horn Pain to be established for quick calls or whatever it needed to be? Maybe not, like not the, not the big calls, like there'd be support back there. But if somebody calls up and says something's not working, we'll send somebody over right away?
If that's the, yeah, absolutely. The answer is yeah, absolutely. But we will also be providing, you know, a, a contact center, right? Like a typical and what you would expect from any service provider where if I've got trouble, I can phone in and get some remote help even. People can, technical people can dial in to help troubleshoot. But to add, you know, to add to that, a local experience is always a great, a great add. And we would certainly be willing to do that. Absolutely.
I think I get your, I understand your point immediately, John. I think, you know, we don't want to wait on service calls from somebody coming from an urban center, you know, wait from somebody from Thunder Bay or Sault Ste. Marie two days to get, you know, your modem changed or something like that.
Right, right.
Which we've all experienced and that's kind of what you're, what you're driving.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we also, we, like, again, you know, in, in my, my earlier bragging point about how, how quickly we do put problems to bed when they do arise, we do have things like national sparing strategies and things of that nature. So we do put key components right into the community. And so, you know, whatever arrangement, again, that, that suits the, you know, the, the community will make, but at bare minimum, we'll have sparing local to the community. will make, but at bare minimum, we'll have sparing local to the community so that the repair needn't be waiting for parts to arrive, so to speak. You know, when, when they do, when they do happen. So that's, that's a big part of how we would strategically organize the support.
Okay. Is there another question by Peter or Belinda?
I'm good, John. Thanks.
You're still good? Okay. So from what I understand and what I read, if we partner with you guys, we're dealing directly with, with you guys. It's not other communities in a pool or anything like that. It's, we're dealing one-to-one with you guys, basically, or?
Unless there's a desire to do it differently. We, we do, you know, essentially, we do look at, our, our sort of mode of operation is to look at an aggregation model. So when we're looking, looking at some of these very small communities, obviously, the economics don't work in and of themselves sometimes. But if we look at them, maybe, you know, looking at proximate communities and make a bigger, you know, create the compulsion basically to engage, we'll do that. But if on the other hand, there's a desire to, to, you know, be separated and, and, and discreet, then again, flexibility is the key here. So I think what we're proposing right now would be that, yeah, you'd be dealing with community network partners. And we would be your service provider. And/or we could invite other service providers to provide services in the community as well, you know, whether that's Shaw or, you know, some local TV provider or voice provider, things of that nature, you could invite them. Again, you know, if we do share the, in the ownership, then there's a, you know, a voice that the council would have at the table there in terms of wanting to steer that one way or another, whether that's toward or away from that sort of model. But right now, it's, you know, community network partners would build it and operate it.
Perfect. So kind of one last question for me anyways, right now. There will be flexibility in when, if we're putting in fiber optic cable, whether it be on the poles or in the ground. We're going to have to do pieces at a time, right? Like, I don't know if we're going to get it all done in one year.
No, that's good thinking. Again, a, a welcome point, John. We would, we would structure the construction in a reasonable fashion. So, you know, whether that's phases, you know, we, we could certainly, you know, you know, if we wanted to get it all done in one construct season, we, I, I believe for the size of the community we're talking about, I do believe that that's achievable. But if on the other hand, that scene is too disruptive, we could phase it. We could create sections that we address, perhaps those most densely populated, whether that's on the business front or residential centric, or maybe some combination thereof. We can structure this any way that we see fit, aggressively or conservatively.
Okay. I had a whole list here.
Yeah, listen, I, I realize there's a lot to, to take in here. You know, we're, we don't have to nail them all today, if, if, even if some of the questions aren't coming to mind. Again, we don't want this to be a pressure sales tactic or perceived as such. We really, really want you to recognize it for what it is, which is a, an opportunity for, for us to potentially take advantage and bring good things to, to Horn Pain. I'd love, I'd love maybe just your thoughts in terms of how this sits with you. You know, are you feeling sort of, you know, not sure? Does it sound compelling? And yes, we should probably, you know, take the next step. Are you willing to maybe just let, you know, just that little bit of feedback in terms of where your hearts and minds are?
Well, I certainly, I, I really enjoyed what, what you've said today. Some of my biggest concerns, I think you addressed pretty good, which was one is having a local person here in Horn Pain, that is the go-to person, because we value that here in Horn Pain quite a bit, is being able just to call up somebody and say, hey, come and help us, or whatever it is. I like that. I like dealing directly with you guys, with, with the main company. And the flexibility going between a wireless and a wired system is pretty attractive. Because I know it's going to be hard for to put wires everywhere, right? So we're going to go in a closed session a little later, later on, and we'll have a discussion about with town council, with the counselors and myself. And well, we're asking these questions because all the information helps, right?
Absolutely.
It's a big difference.
Okay. Well, we definitely respect that. And, you know, if I can leave you with nothing more than the, a couple of key messages, I would say, you know, again, it's just, you know, there's money on the table that we want to take advantage of it. And two, you know, we are completely flexible in how we go about this, both how we build it, how we fund it, how we partner, and how we operate it. We want to be flexible. We want to bring what the community and certainly the community leaders see as the right fit for their community at the right pace, given all the things that you're, you're faced with and that you deal with on a daily basis. So with that in mind, you know, we're certainly open for any other questions that come. And, and thank you for your time. We're very grateful for the time to share this with you.
I think.
Before, before I go to Peter and Belinda, do you guys have any questions? I have one, go ahead, Melina.
One thing. Oh, sorry, Belinda.
One thing I'm kind of wondering, do you think the monies that are, the government is putting out, do you think they're going to make it so we're going to have to rush and use that money? Do you think we're going to be able to make a? What I'm worried about is that our community is not ready to do a lot of things right away when it comes to the wiring or digging or whatever. And are we going to, do you think they're going to put a lot of pressure on us to get this, you know?
No, we've seen, we've seen in many communities with the Icon Fund, they'd want to, what the provincial government is looking at right now is they want to know that we have a plan to use the funds. So I think if we get to the table and kind of decide, you know, the Horn Pain is very much interested in using the funds, but you know, this is the fashion that we want to use them, you know? They want to do residential for, you know, we want to do a phased project, which includes, you know, phase one residential, phase two, they, they're building out an industrial park, say. I think they'll be very, from what I've seen to date in other communities, they've been very, very flexible and supportive. But the provincial government has a very strong mandate of, of connecting all communities before, I think, 2025. So I, they've been very, very flexible and supportive. So, I mean, we would certainly have to go to them with a plan, but as, as long as we're saying, you know, we're working on it and, and they, they are seeing progress being made.
Okay.
And I believe that they will be supportive.
Right.
And the other thing I wanted to, to add is the letter of intent that, that I provided to Gail for, for your review. It was marked draft across it. And, and as John mentioned, it was really just a kind of a jumping off point. So please, when you're reviewing that, just recognize that all of the terms and conditions in that letter for the most part are really, you know, really open to discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Gail.
Melanie, I just wanted to ask you. I, you were breaking up, or on my computer, you were breaking up when you were talking about Ontario Connects. And I know it's just out and it's just early days, but I wanted to know if you know, or if you said there's a cap for each community. I know you had mentioned before, NOHFC, there's 500,000 available, up to 500,000 available per community. Is there a figure from Ontario Connects that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of any figures for Ontario Connects. That said, it's very, very early on. However, I do believe that it's, it's going to be similar funding model for like number of homes passed or number of homes connected. So I believe it'll be, it's based on some kind of funding formula.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, I got two questions for you. One is regarding the grants that have come out in the new federal election that's coming up. Are they, are they in jeopardy in some way? Like, could they be pulled back or what's your feeling?
Well, what we've seen in the past, John, is, for example, with in, in Manitoba, at the end of, or the middle of 2019, you know, things, things got railed there. But that's, that's the problem with, with the government funding, right? If we sit around and wait for, for it to be a sure thing, you know, many of us wouldn't even be where we are today. And many of the communities wouldn't be where they are today. Unfortunately, it seems to be the approach that most communities take, right? It's, you know, when we get the funding, then we'll, then we'll, then we'll talk. You know, we'll get into, into the details. It's a really good point. It's a really good question. I mean, nothing is, nothing is certain. You know, if, if the Liberals get booted out, you know, with the, you know, the incoming party undo it, it'd be a pretty unpopular move, I'd say. But, you know, anything's possible. So there, there is that risk indeed, you know? I, I, I don't think it's a real, you know, big one though, this time around.
Yeah, me too. So my final question, and this is a million dollar question. There's another, how? What would stop us, or what would you guys provide that a company, something like Telusat, with their satellite internet provide? What can you guys do to entice us to go your route?
Well, that's a good question as well. Telusat and, and, you know, other satellite providers, you know, so one is performance, no doubt about it. I mean, with satellite, you've got, you've got limitations that you don't necessarily have with a, you know, a fiber-based broadband network. Price is probably another. I don't think you're necessarily going to be able to provide that sort of, you know, $90 price point for, you know, for a, for a typical, all-you-can-eat, unlimited in terms of how much data you consume in a given period, right? That's what we're proposing here. There's no metered data, which is typically what's the deal with, with satellite and other, and other programs. This is unlimited. So I think one is performance in terms of speeds and feeds. The other is price. You know, now, now there's also, you know, this, this character named Elon Musk that I'm sure you've heard about. And you know, the Starlink product has got a lot of acclaim. You know, the sex appeal or whatever we want to call it, with, with Elon Musk being, you know, the modern day superhero, it seems like. But, but even that, you know, there's a limitation to it. Like, it's great when, you know, there's, it's kind of like a highway, you know? If you were to drive down the highway on your own, you'd say, wow, this is really fast. But then when you do it during rush hour, it's not, not exactly the same experience. So as more and more people kind of saturate those beams, as they're called, the satellite beams for each geography, as more and more people concurrently utilize that, the performance starts to degrade. Now, Elon Musk is a pretty crafty person. You know, he runs some pretty innovative companies. I'm sure they'll overcome that. I'm not going to lie, it's, it's definitely something that is out there and is, is an option. But it's, you're dealing with a capital, you know, capitalistic entity, right? Their sole purpose is to make money and provide a service. Whereas I think we're bringing something different here. We're bringing a community service. We want to, we want to employ local community members. We want to have the community have a voice in how that network evolves and operates and performs. So you won't get that from a Bell or a Telusat or a Starlink or any, you know, anybody like that. You're just, you're going to get a price that they set and you're going to get a, you know, a service for it. You're not going to get a voice that says, we think that we need to make it more affordable. And how, how we can do that is by going after, you know, an infusion of cash or whatever the case may be, or going after that enterprise customer, having them, you know, utilize our services and supplement the, the rest of the community. You know, decisions like that, so that the residents, community members are prospering and benefiting from it, as opposed to just simply buying another utility from someone based in the US.
Thanks, John.
I hope that didn't sound too, you know, too aggressive.
Well, it's fine. Go ahead, Melanie.
I think I have a very unique, maybe not a unique, but I think I have a different perspective from an economic development practitioner, expensive perspective. You know, what are, what we're proposing is a network that will grow with, you know, with the community, community infrastructure. You know, that can either be owned by Horn Pain or at least be supported by Horn Pain. So when the new hotel is constructed by, you know, is constructed and erected, when the industrial park is there, we will connect it. You know, we won't have to, you won't have to rely on, you know, a shipment of 10 satellites to come in and be put on the top of this, this, your new hotel. And I think that's really important. It'll, it's going to be community infrastructure that can be used for future generations. And I think it's, it's so important. It's, it's a wholesale network, not retail-based, that can be used by people of all, you know, of everybody in your community. First, if you need to be a customer of Starlink, you need to pay your $800 dish or installation. And, you know, there's many people in your community that can afford that. And that will be left out. But they will be able to afford the $90. And so that is so, so important. So that's a retail solution. And that's okay for a lot of places that need to, can only get them. There's a time and a place for those services. But in a municipality like that's as progressive and innovative as Horn Pain, we need some really top-of-the-line, carrier-grade community infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's other question from Belinda or Peter or Gail or anybody else?
I'm good.
I hear nothing. Okay. Well, thank you, Melanie and John. I appreciate you guys sticking with us. A long, long meeting here, but we're going to go into closed session here to, to discuss what we talked about today. So if you guys want to sign off, I think Gail will be back in touch with you guys later on.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you again for your time. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So the next portion of the meeting is a closed session. Oh, before we go to that, Gail, the draft council resolution, are we to do anything with that?
No, that's just up for, for discussion.
Should we discuss it here in open or after?
I would discuss.
Say again, please?
Yes, I would discuss it after.
Very well. Okay. So we'll move into a closed session. So I need a move and mover and a seconder for the next resolution.
Put me down.
Belinda, Belinda and Pete?
Yeah.
Be resolved that the next portion of the meeting at 7:09. Be close to the public in order to discuss a possession plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board pursuant to section 239, 2K of the Municipal Act 2001. It's carried. So we just close out here and go to closed link?